Good evening. I'd like to call to order the November 18th, 2024 Lansing City Council Meeting to order. Clerk Swope, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallavani Glue.
President.
Councilmember Spatafor. There are eight members present at quorum, and we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we are meditation and pledge of allegiance. Are there any councilmembers that would like to remember somebody at this time? Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. We'd like to remember Brandon Glasgow and his family and the other victims of the crash that happened on Interstate 96 a few weeks ago since our last meeting. Brandon, if you didn't know him, was a great human being. He was a wonderful father, wonderful husband, and a great coach. We had the privilege to have my daughter on his youth basketball team last year, and he did a great job. He's one of our Lansing Parks and Recreation volunteer coaches, great person, and he'll be missed along with the rest of his family and the other victims of that crash. So we would ask that you keep your prayers in mind.
Thank you. Do we have any additional persons that you would like to be remembered at this time? All right, seeing none with that, we will take a moment of meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
of America, with all due diligence, with liberty and justice for all. You have for your approval the council proceedings of October 14th and 28th.
Vice President Hussein. Sorry, I would move the printed council proceedings as presented. Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
We are to late items.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. I would like to make a motion to suspend Council Rule Nine to consider the late item that is before you, which is setting a show cause hearing for 122 South Grand that will be set Monday, December 2nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM rather than tonight. There was an issue with the required notifications.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Cost. Okay, we do have a proper motion in place for this late item. Do we have any additional comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies, and we have the 2024 Citizens Academy graduates.
All right. Vice President Hussein.
All right. It looks like we have Ms. Robin Anderson King, Tensilia Delisa Fontaine. Okay, that's fine. Robin, if you want to come down and the 2024 graduates, appreciate it.
All right. All right. Thank you so much. First of all, this is exciting. This is, in terms of the Citizens Engagement Academy, this is a deep, deep dive essentially that our citizens here in the city of Lansing take in the city government and operations. It's an 11-week course, typically starts, I believe, in August. Applications are, I think, open May, maybe. And they accept about 20 folks, and then again, they take a deep, deep dive into all things city government related. I know that we have a number of members on council been involved because there is some engagement of city officials, departmental directors, things of that nature. There are some field trips, I think, to the wastewater treatment center, to the Border Water Light Grid Control Room, field trips of, or I should say tours of City Hall. Just a number of things. The coolest thing about this program, in my opinion, though, is that the folks that participate, they are incredibly empowered, so much as where, I mean, they are actually out in the community at association meetings, contact meetings, things of that nature, and they're really sharing what they have learned with folks to ensure that we have a capable, competent, and really informed citizenry. So we certainly appreciate the department for continuing this. And I'm going to let Ms. Robin Anderson King with the Department of Neighbors, Arts, and Citizen Engagement speak a little bit more about maybe the program, but then also to recognize these fantastic graduates that we have behind us. Okay? All right.
Good evening, everyone. I do want to say that behind me, what you see is just a sampling of the wonderful, incredibly talented people who participated in our Citizens Academy this year. They came every single Tuesday, or almost every single Tuesday for 11 weeks. That is a commitment to your city. We took a deep dive into our city government, and what this does is it's empowering our citizens to know what our government is, how it works, and what you can do to make change. We've all gone through this last election season, and I don't think anyone came out unscathed, one way or the other. But I want everyone to know that if you take a deep dive into your government, you know how it works and what you can do and how change happens, that is where things start to change. That is where you start to see results. These people here decided, I want to see something happen. I want to take a deep dive, and I am going to commit to being in Citizens Academy for 11 weeks. It will open up again in May, in May, and we will have a whole new cohort. We are looking forward to anyone in this room who decides they want to be a part of this. You are all welcome. I'd love to see you there. Please feel free to reach out to me. I'm over at Let's Community Center. My name is Robin Anderson King, and I am the Neighborhood Resource Coordinator. And at this time, I would like to recognize the people who were in Citizens Academy. My first person is Angela Allen. Londa Blackwell. As you can see, I'm going through them because we had some people, they just couldn't be here this evening. They really wanted to, but just due to other commitments, they could not make it. Claire Healy-West. We even have one person put off moving to a new state to start a new job because he was so invested in making sure he finished out his citizenhood in the city of Lansing on a good foot. Jay West. Please say hello and give a great round of applause to 2024's Citizens Academy.
All right, that takes us to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Do we have any comments from council? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, and congratulations again. I am alumni of the Citizens Academy, so I really appreciate everyone's commitment, the quality of program, the caliber, and everything that you learn, as well as the city employees who participate. I learned so much, and it gave me the opportunity to make a decision to run for city council because once I, you know, got that refreshing and that understanding, I wanted to do more. So congratulations to everyone, as well as Delisa Fontaine, the director over the department. Appreciate all that great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from council? Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So a couple of meetings, and actually, one of our graduates, Angela Allen, reminded me of one of the meetings that I was supposed to announce tonight. So on Tuesday, which is tomorrow, the Churchill Downs Community Association will be meeting. That's at 5825 Wise Road, and they will be meeting at 6:30 PM. They do have elections, I think, for their vice president, treasurer, and three at-large positions. And then they have a presentation, I believe, from the Border Water Light. I could be wrong. And then obviously, a number of neighborhood updates and things of that nature. They also have their community or neighborhood holiday party. That would be December 17th, same location, 6:00 PM, 5825 Wise Road. So if you live in Churchill Downs and you're able to get involved and participate in either or both of those activities, please do. On Thursday at 7:00 PM at the Mayflower Church right on Mount Hope, the Luton Rich Neighborhood Association will be meeting. That's again at 7:00 PM. I know that myself, I'm typically there. Councilmember Brown is typically there. They typically have updates from Juvenile South Lansing Southwest Action Group, and then they also have their community service officer that is typically there to talk about public safety issues within that neighborhood. So if you can make that meeting, certainly would appreciate you guys coming out. And then lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about our constituent contact meetings moving forward in terms of the Third Ward. We traditionally do not meet in December, so we do take that month off. We will be meeting again January 11th, which is the second Saturday in January, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon at 5825 Wise Road. There's a lot happening at the South Side Community Center. And then we're looking at potentially doing a joint meeting, Councilman Garza and myself, for February, so the second Saturday of February, I believe it's February 8th. I think we're good to go. Fantastic. And the reason for that joint meeting is we want to have the Border Water Light come in. There is a lot going on, particularly South MLK, West Jolly, as well as Pleasant Grove. So folks are seeing trees being removed and trees being repaired back and things of that nature. That is all part of the South Lansing Transmission Reinforcement Project. So Border Water Light has committed to coming out and making sure that they not only present on what they are doing and the need for what they're doing, but also to answer questions from the public. So again, January 11th and February 8th mark your calendars, second Saturday, 10 o'clock for constituent contact meetings. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Vice President. Do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none. Clerk Swope.
Thank you, President Garza. I just want to take a moment and thank everyone who participated in the election that we had a couple of weeks ago. Seems already like it was forever ago, but I think this is the first meeting since. I particularly want to thank my staff who worked many days in a row. Many of them worked 18, 19 days in a row without a day off because of the new early voting and requires us to be in the office on two Saturdays and Sundays in a row. So they worked very hard. In addition to the election inspectors, who just work incredibly hard under pressure, and they do it just a few times a year, so I really appreciate their involvement. We could not do it without them. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, please come forward. We'll give you one minute to announce. And seeing none, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, legislative matters, and also sign up for the show cause hearing. So if you're here for the show cause hearing, that's a green sign-in sheet in the back. If you're here for legislative matters, which includes the two public hearings as well as items seven through 22 on the agenda, that's a blue sign-in sheet, and we'll give you about another minute to sign in in the back if you wish to address city council. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
All right. Thank you. I've got a few things to share. First, I want to congratulate the Citizens Academy. I know they're still here. We just did a graduation, but for the public, I think this is our sixth or seventh Citizens Academy, and I agree with everything that was said. It's a fantastic program. We love to have these ambassadors talking about the incredible things going on in the city of Lansing. So we appreciate that. The neighborhood grant portal is now open, so any of our registered civic organizations or neighborhood groups can apply for our neighborhood grants. Go to our neighborhood's website. Please do that soon because it's now open. On December 5th, we're going to be having our community budget discussion at Guyer at 6:00 PM. We do that every year before we start preparing our budget, chance to the public to hear about the budget process and to provide their priorities. I'm excited to let everyone know that we expect Michigan Avenue to be open. We are hoping we are going to have it open before Friday, so that way it can be open for Silverbells and for the Michigan State Games. We know a lot of people will come and go down Michigan Avenue, so we expect it to be open Thursday or Friday, depending on if it snows or not on Thursday. And yeah, you heard that right, snow on Thursday, potentially. MLK is now open, so you can go north and south on MLK, so that's another positive, yay, end of construction and new roads, good stuff. This Wednesday, the West Side will be having a meeting about CSO activities for four streets over the winter. So the folks that are impacted should have gotten cards. I don't have the time offhand, but I'm sure we can get it if anybody needs it. On, let's see, also on Wednesday, we have Lansing Save Night, so all of our students in the Lansing School District get bank accounts and savings accounts, and we'll be doing a program with them at Don Johnson Fieldhouse. I think the program starts, I think the event starts at 5:00, but the program starts at 6:15. But it's a great program where our kids learn how to save and get savings accounts. It's great. On Thursday, we'll be doing our Safe Streets for All Public Meeting at Guyer at 4:30. This is the grant for safety and corridors and crash rates and things, so we'll be doing public comment on that. I'm excited. On Thursday, BB's Boutique is opening at Middle Village, so another small business that will be opening here in Lansing. I think they are originally from Flint and are expanding here to Lansing. So that should be great. Our Greater Lansing Food Bank continues to have mobile food pantries. We have our next one here in Lansing coming up on Thursday, the 21st, from 2:30 to 3:30 at New Mount Cavalry Baptist Church at 3,800 West Miller. They also just had one last Saturday at the South Church of the Nazarene. And I was asked to remind you that our Lansing Community Connect is coming up Thursday, November 21st, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's at the CADA Downtown Transportation Center. Folks of need can get coats, can get hats and gloves, personal items, vaccinations, and it's a walkthrough service, but insurance card is recommended to receive vaccinations. So we are excited for that and thankful to the Delta Dental Foundation and Holy Cross for co-sponsoring that. And then finally, as I alluded to, this Friday is Silverbells. So we will have our annual Silverbells in the City, electric light parade. There'll be fireworks. There'll be a community sing-along. There'll be drones. So it'll be a lot of fun. Starts, the parade starts at 6:00 PM. It's supposed to be nice. Weather's supposed to be nice, and hope to see everyone there, and then happy Thanksgiving to everybody after that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Okay, we are to show cause hearings. We have one show cause hearing, orders to make, save, or demolish to the owners of 122 South Grand Avenue.
Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So quickly, this property, actually, this will be one of two show cause hearings. We'll have a second one December 2nd because there was a mix-up with putting the notices on the doors, which was the resolution we just approved for consideration for late item. But this property is, just for everyone's awareness, is 122 South Grand. It's the Walter Neller Building, the one with all the boards on the windows. This was originally red-tagged 10/20/2016. 16? Must be a typo there. It's about $2.5 million in repairs, and the SEV on this is $561,000. And it's owned by Summit Associates, Two LLC.
Okay, we have one speaker for the show cause hearing, Lindsay LeBlanc. You have up to three minutes to address city council.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay LeBlanc. I am the Director of Development for Granger Group. We're the owner of Summit Buildings and the Walter Neller Building. I have been working with Raleigh-
Excuse me. Could you just stand a little closer to the mic, please?
Sure. Sorry about, oh, sorry about that. Again, my name is Lindsay LeBlanc. I'm the Director of Development for Granger Group. We're the partner, or the parent company that owns the Walter Neller Building. We have been working for this. I was working on this in the spring through the summer, and then I went on maternity leave. I've been making a lot of progress. I actually will be signing a contract this week, and we'll be doing the 10-day notice with the city for the abatement of the building and hoping to start demolition of that in March when the snow is done. Happy to provide all of that information to the city. I've been working with Raleigh through the Department of Economic Development, and we will be hopefully getting that down very soon. Just coming up here to let you know that we are making progress on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so for the referral of the show cause hearing, although we're having a second one, so we probably shouldn't even refer it. So we will go to public comment on legislative matters, and again, that includes items seven through 22, as well as the two scheduled public hearings. Item five, special assessment, Principal Shopping District, 2024 to 2028 rolls, and item six, amending chapter 404 to provide for designated electric vehicle parking space regulations.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Just very quickly, we had a presentation on this earlier tonight. This is essentially a special assessment for promotional efforts, business improvement in all zones, PSD, the Principal Shopping District. Then also, there's physical improvements included with regard to Zone A, so you think of snow removal, trash pickup, that type of thing. In any event, we are, again, this is a public hearing, and we'll be asked to consider this later tonight, but what we're being asked to do is approve, actually, the 2024 rule and then 30% increases in 2025, 2026, 2027, and 2028. That would be for all zones.
And then Councilman Spatafor.
Sure. The ordinance I'm speaking to this evening amends chapter 404.14 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances. This deals with electric vehicle charging parking spaces. It defines what an electric vehicle is and what an electric vehicle parking space is, and provides for rules under which those spaces should be used and should not be used while the intent is to limit it to those spaces owned and operated by the city of Lansing. If a private entity wishes to have enforcement, we can do so under those ordinance as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to the public, we do have several written appeals to the Principal Shopping District assessment. We have Dan O'Leary, Priyanka Watwe, Mark Gaspere of the Michigan Pharmacists Association, Mindy Kraus, Elise Ribbons of Tarheel Love LLC, and Sean Elliott. So those will be made part of the record. And here to speak tonight, we have Daniel Loretta Stanaway, followed by Daniel Black.
Well, tonight is a yay and a nay. And the yay, of course, is for the item 20, the ballot proposal for the Park Millage. I would be amiss if I did not speak on behalf of that. This is a renewal of a millage that's gone on for, I'm believing, 20 years. It's a five-year interval of time, and it is certainly appreciated and needed. We have 100, and I think it's 11 parks. We have the golf course. We have the cemeteries, and they all need every bit of investment that we can see to send their way. So I encourage the public to support that millage when it comes around on a ballot. And then the nay is, I mean, you can guess it, the brownfield. I don't really think I need to go into a whole lot of detail here, but you know my stand. I think we are cutting our own throats and depriving ourselves and our citizenry of much-needed services every time we defer collecting taxes from those people who are profiting off of those structures. There is no question that these people getting brownfields are making money, or they wouldn't be doing the project, and they are making that money at the expense of our citizens. However you want to parse it, that's the bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Daniel Black.
Good evening. First off, it's a little paid political advertisement. If anybody is so moved by my comments tonight, I'm at 517-507-5552. No, Brian Jackson, hey, thank you for coming tonight, but did you know that you're not required to be here tonight, much like any other city council meeting, but we do appreciate your meeting. Peter, we appreciate you being here tonight. Hopefully, tonight isn't too taxing on your heavy work schedule. And finally, Ryan, we missed you this afternoon at the TCOL8 meeting, where you are a city council board member for Tri-County Office on Aging. Like I said, I just attended the Tri-County Office on Aging Consortium meeting. It was a little baptism by fire. Thank you for helping me out there, Jeffrey. I came in on the tail end of the Committee of the Whole tonight, and where the gentle, losey folks were presenting to the Committee of the Whole and came to find out through, in a discussion on the floor, that his five projects do not have any Section 8 units in the five projects, if I'm not correct, Brian. And you're a big proponent of Section 8. Thank you very much for that. And I am, myself, a Section 8 voucher client. So having only spent one year trying to get a Section 8 in your five units, I can appreciate that. But if you Google Daniel Black and Capital Commons, those two phrases together, you'll see what five years achieves. Five years, if you Google Daniel Black and Capital Commons. It took me five years. Thank you, council.
Thank you. We are to the referral of the public hearings. We have item five, the special assessment.
That will go to Committee of the Whole and placed on file because we will be taking action on that later this evening.
Okay, and item six, amending chapter 404.
That will go to public safety.
All right, then we are to the consent agenda.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure. Sorry, in the consent agenda, we have a resolution that deals with fireworks display license for Ace Pyro LLC of the City of Lansing Silverbell Celebration, resolution of grant acceptance for the Michigan National Resources Trust Fund Grant for land acquisition of 1624 East Kavanaugh Road. We have a donation acceptance from Shea Mac Events Charity Golf Ounting Donation to the Victim Advocate Unit. We have a reappointment resolution for Tiffany Dowling as a member of the Saginaw Street Corridor Improvement Authority Board of Directors for a term that expired June 30th, 2028. We have an appointment of Patty Farhat as the Third Ward Member of the Police Board of Commissioners for a term that expired June 30th, 2027. And then we have the special assessment, sorry, as referenced earlier, for the Principal Shopping District, 2024 to 2028 rolls. Shopping District, 2024 to 2028 roles. Would that out? Would you consent agenda?
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Our motion passes.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action. We have the appointment of Sharon Gillison to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Board.
Councilman Jackson.
Yes, thank you. I would like to move the appointment of Cheryl Gillison to the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Advisory Board. A few things about Sharon, and you can make your way to the front here, that she is a lifelong Lansing resident and a longtime steward union, or union steward. And she worked at Lafayette for many years and ended up working her way to management position in 1986. And she ended up doing human resources for the company before they really even had human resources and was doing EDI work by trying to develop policies for hiring in that large organization that included hiring people with different ethnicities, disabilities, sexual orientation. And as she says, she was doing EDI work before it was even called that. So she organically found out about this position when she was looking on the city website and she noticed a vacancy and thought about her qualifications and her time and she decided to volunteer and serve. So with that, I would move her appointment.
Well, good evening. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board Member.
Of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion of the Advisory Board Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
That's quite a mouthful.
While she and I are signing, that takes you to the Randy Watkins' appointment to the Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. So we had Mr. Randy Watkins come before public safety. Randy, if you want to come on down, thank you. Randy is a lifelong resident of Lansing. He is currently an instructor at LCC. He's got a master's in social science from the U of M School and a master's in public administration from Western Michigan University. He has served on the HRA Board, Human Resources Advisory. He's currently on the DEI and will be moving to Police Commissioners. He actually is serving right now in the subcommittee on the DEI for criminal justice and public safety. So he was very interested in serving in this open-at-large seat that is on Police Commissioners. So with that, and Mr. Watkins was also asked if he had time to make the meetings. Of course, he did say yes, and it was very clear, I think, to all of the folks in committee that he was very invested in the community, wants to continue to serve. So I would move Mr. Watkins for the at-large position on Police Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cost. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Our motion passes. Congratulations.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the Office of Board of Police Commissioners Member.
Of the Office of Board of Police Commissioners Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that takes the council to the appointment of Alexander Rusik to the Downtown Lansing Inc. Board.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, and so we have Alexander on hand as well. Come on down. Certainly appreciate you being here. We actually had Alexander to our last development and planning meeting. I thought it was a fantastic interview. This particular board has, there's actually a mandate that they have to have at least five owners and operators of businesses in the Principal Shopping District. And so Alexander Rusik actually qualifies by way of being a shareholder with Foster Swift, Collins Smith P.C., which is at 313 South Washington. In addition to being a shareholder, Mr. Rusik did share with us that he is actually a founder and a current board member of the Army of Survivors Incorporated, that he's also a board member of Highlands, and that he is a board member, president-elect of the Ingham County Bar Association, of the State Bar of Michigan Litigation Section Governing Council. And this is in addition to just a host of other posts and awards and things of that nature that were shared with us at committee. One of the things that was asked of Mr. Rusik in committee was, you know, kind of what is his vision for downtown? He talked a little bit about this, as we all do, but the disruption of everything that is good downtown due to the pandemic. And so he talked a lot about placemaking, infrastructure considerations, building critical mass downtown, and really trying to leverage some of his legal experience to make, you know, some of those things happen. So we certainly appreciate Mr. Rusik's willingness, and that I would move the resolution.
Thank you. We have a proper motion in place. Any additional comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Congratulations.
I do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States- That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
That I will faithfully discharge the duties-
Of the Office of Downtown Lansing Inc. Board Member.
Of the Office of Downtown Lansing Inc. Board Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that takes the council to a series of claim appeals.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This first claim appeal is for trash fees at 5223 South Martin Luther King Jr. in the amount of total with administrative fees, $625. Basically, the quick summary is that there was stuff that was on this person's business property, a mattress and some other things. He got a notice to remove them and he told us that somebody else had dumped that property near his dumpster, and there was a picture of a little dumpster, not a full-size Granger one, but a much smaller one. And there it is, right there. So the claimant reports that he cleaned up everything that could fit in the dumpster, put it in there, the dumpster comes every two weeks, and that he supposedly told the City of Lansing that the mattress he'll get the following week, or the next time, yeah, the following week when it comes to do the removal or it gets empty again. Then the city people, or excuse me, the contractor came and picked up stuff, including unnamed stuff that wasn't even part of the initial notice. They kind of cleaned up everything that they felt was debris and against the code, which included various pieces of wood and otherwise. And the claimant is appealing, saying that, one, all the stuff that they took wasn't part of the notice, and, two, I let the city know that I'm trying to clean up all the stuff that the people dumped and it just won't all fit in time. And either way, it was outside of the parameters of the procedure and the committee voted it out to the council two to one to be considered denying that claim. So I would move the claim to deny the claimant his appeal of $625 trash fee.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any questions?
Just a comment. So I was one of the people, a person, that voted no. And it was basically because he seemed to have tried to do the things right, cleaning up what he was noticed to do, communicating with the city otherwise, and, you know, those are my reasons. I think that our job is to review it as a whole, and even if the procedure is filed to the T, there might be some exceptions based on the totality of circumstances. So that's why I voted no.
Okay, Councilman Brown.
Yeah, so to make sure I understand, these claim appeals get confusing sometimes. So if we're voting, if we're voting yes, we're voting what?
If we're voting yes, we are voting to deny his $625 reimbursement, correct?
And then if we vote no, we don't agree?
That means he won't pay the fee.
Okay. Well, I, in that, I went and Mr. Davis called me, I went to his property and I listened to his explanation. I saw everything firsthand. I spent about an hour there and followed up with the department. And so I also think that he was in good intention and was cleaning everything up and the timing or whatever happened. And so I will be supporting no, which means not to pay. So that's why I actually spent a lot of time and he was very methodical in what he did and when he did it and how it worked. And he did say one thing that, he said, you know, I'm the business owner, I'm responsible. And so that's why I made sure to do that. But, you know, this was something that I told everyone that, you know, got dumped on my property. And so that's just what I wanted to share. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Opposed.
So is that four? You want to roll call vote?
Certainly, on the motion to reject the, to deny the claim, Councilmember Brown.
Nay.
Councilmember Carter.
Nay.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Palli Donaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Four yeas, four nays, the resolution is not adopted. That takes us to the next claim, claim number 2068.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. So this claim was for $565 trash fee at 818 Call Street. And please forgive me, I don't have the greatest notes on this one, but I know that we in the committee passed-
Hold on to my notebook.
We agreed to reduce it or approve the reduction by $32 because there is a discrepancy in the amount of materials that was actually taken away. And I think it was the toilet that ended up being smaller than the amount that was charged, so it was adjusted to equal $565. And I would move the claim.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This one's an interesting one, kind of. Basically, this business ended up buying a already red-tagged vacant, kind of needs-improvement home, and they did those improvements. From the testimony, it was a lot of various things, from floors to a bunch of other things. And according to the testimony, they fixed it up in a nice condition and got it ready. But the problem is, is that they did not apparently pull permits according to the City of Lansing, even though the lady was there first, she said permits, but according to the city records, they were not pulled. Therefore, we don't know if that job is a good job or not and if everything's working and it's safe. But this one ended up, after, again, a couple delays to find out about the permits and the work, because, again, the testimony shows that it went from a worn-down house to a really nice house that's for sale, but for the permits. So the committee decided to deny the claim, which was for red-tag monitoring fees, being every month is $100. So every month that nobody lived there and they were fixing it up, apparently without permits, they're being charged $100 to, for us, the city, to follow the property and make sure everything's going well. I decided to vote no because I think we want nice houses to be fixed up and nobody was living there. And the purpose, I thought, for red tags was so that no one would live there, and nobody was. They were just fixing it up. I think it is bad, I guess, that they didn't do permits, but they got a nice house. So it didn't, it passed two to one to deny the claim, and I would move the claim.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Our motion passes.
Okay, we are to item 19, setting a public hearing on transformational brownfield plan number ISA.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, just very quickly, because we had a pretty extensive presentation as part of Committee of the Whole. I certainly appreciate the gentle Lozey team, as well as Mr. Dorstmer, from the LDC being on hand, to kind of walk us through this. We are looking to establish a public hearing on December 2nd, and that would set us up for final consideration of this transformational brownfield plan number 87 for December 16th. Very quickly, it's associated with a $317 million economic investment, City of Lansing by New Vision Lansing. This is up from the, about 25%, I think is what I heard earlier, for the $228 million investment that was presented to council earlier this year when we accepted and appropriated $40 million from the state. Does include now five projects as opposed to the three that were originally presented to the council. There is a, sorry, Tower on the Grand, which would comprise a 27-story tower with 287 residential units. Also, there would be attached commercial retail space and space for parking. There is a project on Washington Square. There's actually already been some interior work being done, but that is at, let me see. I think pegged at 60 apartments. Sorry, I had to find the right spot in my notes. Also, parking would be considered and some commercial retail space. Capital Tower was discussed, and this will be at the corner of Walnut and Ottawa, just northwest of Capital. Construction being contemplated for early 2025. That would be a five-story development with four floors of residential and one floor of office space. New to this particular plan is the Ingham Building Project, sorry, at 116 West Ottawa Street. So this is just east of the House of Rep building, as well as the old Bigby, I think it's the Hop Now Coffee Shop. And that would consist of, I believe it is, 25 furnished apartment units and some commercial retail space on the first floor. And then there's actually a new contemplated project in Old Town, which would be kind of parking space infill. It'd be a seven-story building, five being residential, two being parking. It is a 30-year tax capture, includes a number of different taxes that can be captured per the transformational brownfield legislation. And again, this would be December 2nd.
All right, thank you. And then we are to number 20. Oh, wait, so that was a motion for the public hearing. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, we have a motion for the December 2nd public hearing. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Our motion passes.
Okay, item 20, the ballot proposal for the millage.
Vice President Hussein.
Sure, so we have, in the City of Lansing, we've actually been looking at and approving these millages going back to 1990. So we're actually in our 34th year of the millage. Millage, as referenced earlier by Mr. Kacinski, our Parks Director, is used for maintenance of our park system, summer recreational programming, our golf course, cemeteries, et cetera. We did ask how much on an annual basis is actually collected for the millage, and Mr. Kacinski did text me just a moment ago and let me know that the number's not 3.2 million, but 2.3 million, which is still incredibly significant. million, which is still, uh, incredibly significant. Uh, the park board, uh, did approve, uh, putting this on the ballot August fifth, 2025. Um, and that would have been, I think their meeting was, uh, uh, early October. Uh, this is a, um, one mil, so one dollar per $1,000 of taxable value. Uh, and again, we have, uh, been voting on this and approving this, uh, going all the way back to 1990. So it has quite a bit of community support. Uh, with that being said, I would move the resolution, uh, pertaining to the ballot proposal.
We have a proper motion in place and that is December second as well for the public hearing?
No, no, we're actually.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we have the late item, setting a show cause hearing for 122 South Grand Make Safe or Demolish.
Uh, let's see, Councilman Jackson. Oh, no. I'm sorry, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Um, so this is a, a set of show cause hearing, uh, about that 122, um, South Grand Avenue. This is a, a late item, um, in front of you. Um, so we did earlier, um, were unable to take it off the schedule. So we, um, continued with having folks talk, but because they weren't properly noticed, um, we have to move it now to, uh, a second show cause hearing, um, set for Monday, December second, 2024 at 7:00 PM. So I would move the resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Cost. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Same sign. Motion passes.
Okay, we are to, um, ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing, the City of Lansing codified ordinance being chapter 606, section 606.02, to prohibit the placement of signs in or on the public right-of-way and public buildings, places and facilities, and to establish the responsibility of the persons who place or cause to be placed any sign on public or private property and to provide that a violation of this section is a civil infraction. It is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on City Operations and it is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. We've talked about this a few times and it is a amended ordinance to, not only it's, still prohibits signs in the right-of-way, whether it's in like stick sign and the public right-of-way, the space between the sidewalk and the curb, or the medians of like MLK medians. And it excludes on the poles. If you put on your, put on a sign, like a handyman sign or buy a car sign on the poles. So it's still illegal, um, but what it does is it presumes that the business or person or whatever's being advertised on the actual placard is the responsible party. And it would make that punishment a civil infraction that carries a fine with it. Um, and basically, yeah, that's what it does. It changes it to put the presumption on the owner of the sign, not necessarily the property it's on, but what the actual person that's advertising, its company or political campaign or whatever. So I would move that ordinance.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. This is a roll call vote. Before that, is there any further discussion? Councilman Jackson.
Um, just really quick, the reason why, even though it was in my committee, that I don't, won't ultimately support it. It's not that I don't think it's needed. It's not that I don't think that it will somehow work. It's two reasons. One is because I don't like the idea of whoever's sign it is being responsible because we know that it's not always that person or business that's putting the signs out, especially political campaigns. I understand that the intent is more to capture the people that's doing free advertisement, like someone's handyman service that I keep seeing. Um, but in the eyes of the law, I believe we are not allowed to distinguish between what, whether it's a handyman or a president's campaign. So I just don't like the idea of someday in the future, anybody's campaign, like receiving these, uh, fines or someone's business when they didn't put it out there and then not being able to prove it. That's just my reason, but, um, it's a vote.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Oh, I'm sorry, attorney, I didn't see you. Uh, Councilwoman Pallavani.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for, um, holding this question for so long. And just to speak to your comment, I think we're talking about political, political signs. I think it is kind of fair to put the onus on the person who's responsible for those signs because ultimately we know the person whose name on that sign is responsible. So I take just a, a slight exception to that. But I do wonder, um, now that we're going to a civil infraction versus what was previously happening, which was basically a warning letter, does that stop of sending a warning letter to the person whose name is on the sign? Does that continue before the infraction is issued? Or does it just go directly to that civil infraction?
So attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that there's no notice requirement or warning in this ordinance, but that when they roll it out, if it passes, they're going to look for some type of notice ahead of time and maybe even keep that notice throughout. But as far as the ordinance, there's no provision. But with it being a civil infraction, according to our attorneys, mailing it to the address is sufficient.
That is a correct summary. Okay, Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, as part of our, our committee, I don't know if we said it as, in as many words, uh, but it's the administration's job to put forth the policy that operationalizes this ordinance. And so we had at the time, um, uh, kind of take, taken a position that we would actually ask the administration, um, that, that rollout really is kind of a, uh, enforcement through education piece. Uh, I don't, I don't think anybody wants to, um, you know, jump on people, uh, immediately, particularly, uh, when folks, you know, aren't necessarily aware that this, I mean, this has been on the books, not necessarily the teeth of this, um, that we're actually adding. Uh, but this has been a law for quite some time. Uh, but I think really we would like to enforce through education. Uh, but then if we have to get after the bad actors, it actually gives us the teeth to get after the bad actors, the perpetual bad actors.
Uh, would you like to expand on that, Mayor Shore?
I, I just, um, um, I will accept that request favorably. Um, I mean, I think we have, as Councilman Jackson even said, we have certain people who have been doing this over and over again for free advertising. We have sent them letters. We have taken pictures. We have removed. I think there are certain folks who understand what they're doing. Again, if there's somebody who doesn't understand, I do think they deserve to get a warning letter first. I agree with you, Councilwoman Pallavani Glu, that it's, it's politicians' names on the signs. So the politicians deserve a chance to get a warning letter to say, hey, you've got some signs that are in the right-of-way or that are stapled to a pole. Um, but after that, it's, in my opinion, and if council passes this, it's littering our city. Um, so yes, I, we will, we will enforce it in that way. I'll make sure that code compliance and, and, uh, Director Van Fossen's folks know that. Um, so yes, that we will take that favorably.
Uh, Councilwoman Pallavani.
Thank you. Just one, one quick clarifying comment. Uh, I do think that, um, political signs, I, I do think that the, the politician themselves should be held accountable. I mean, that, that is what it is. We, we should know where the signs are going. I'm thinking about small business owners, people who use this as a means of advertisement, um, folks who, you know, put their information out there to attract business, um, if they could get a warning letter as opposed to just directly that infraction. Um, that, those were the comments that I were, I was going for. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Uh, Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Um, to clarify with the city attorney, um, who is the enforcing agency on this ordinance?
Uh, a whole lot of people. Give me one second to turn to the actual.
It's not just public?
Nope. It's, uh, public service, parks, um, economic development and planning.
So just about any department?
Police, I think. Yep, police. Uh, yep, just about every department that has people that get in cars to leave City Hall at any point.
Okay, except for us.
Correct.
Um, the other thing I would just, I would just say on this is, um, as someone who spent a lot of time, um, before I was, uh, elected to council, cleaning up trash, um, in the gutters and in those places, those signs end up there. They end up clogging drains. We get a phone call, people are mad, flooding is happening, then I'm out in my, uh, big mud boots trying to unclog drains with these signs in them. Yes, yes, I do that. Um, and it is usually a sign or some kind of, uh, material like that. So that's, you know, my beef with these signs, especially on those street corners when the wind catches them in a storm. It's, it's a mess. Um, and it's, it's a problem. It's littered, uh, many, many places. I filled up many bags full of these things. Um, so I will be voting, um, in favor of this.
Thank you for your comments, Councilman Cost. That brings up a question for me, though. With all these different enforcing agencies, um, is there going to be some kind of checks and balances to make sure that multiple, uh, violation notices aren't being sent out from different agencies?
For the same violating sign?
Correct.
Yeah, I think, and we'll talk about this operationally, but I think the thing that's going to make the most sense is someone from an enforcement standpoint, you got to have evidence that the violation occurred. So someone will take a picture of the sign, where it is, and then probably take the sign as evidence of that violation. We're not going to leave it there. So if somebody's going to go out to take a picture, they're taking the sign with them. So at that point, it can't be cited a second time.
Okay. Good. Okay. Any further discussion? Uh, Councilman Carter.
To that point, uh, Greg, will the person be able to retrieve their signage? Or will it already be disposed?
That's a great question.
It's been asked, so I just want, I have to, I have to ask.
Uh, I have many of these signs presently in my office. Um, but, uh, I think we'll talk about it. They, we would have to retain them for a period of time. That's correct.
Thank you.
Not a very long period of time, but.
Okay, we do have a proper motion in place. Uh, Clerks, will, please call the roll.
On adoption of the amendment to chapter 606, Councilmember Carter.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pallavani Glu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown. Seven yeas, one nay, the ordinance is adopted. Do you want immediate effect?
Uh, immediate effect?
Sure.
So moved. So moved. Oh, oh, okay. Okay, uh, there's a motion on the floor for immediate effect. Any further discussion? Councilman Jackson.
Um, just for fairness on immediate effect, there's obviously violators out there now. And I know it's not the intent to roll it out, but if not voting for immediate effect, it's 30 extra days, I think, or 60, whatever it is. I won't be voting for immediate effect.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. For, uh, vote, uh, motion for immediate effect, all those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the City of Lansing codified ordinance being chapter 203, section 203.03, to establish the service requirements for municipal infraction violations arising from the unauthorized placements of signs in violation of section 606.02, is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on City Operations and is on the order of immediate passage. Uh, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. This is the same thing from the previous. It just establishes that this is a civil infraction, which we talked about, not a crime punishable by a penalty, and I would move that amendment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Clerks, will, please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pallavani Glu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadfor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Carter. Eight yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Is there a motion?
Because I know Councilman Jackson probably won't move it for immediate passage, I'll move it, uh, for, for immediate, um, action, whatever. Immediate effect, sorry, couldn't think of the word. Thank you.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place for immediate effect. Any further discussion? Councilman Jackson.
Well, since it's going to be immediately effect, I'd rather them get a civil infraction since we already got it. So that all those signs out there are violators, we might as well at least have it a civil infraction.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor for the immediate effect? Uh, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Same sign. All right, motion passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government related matters. Uh, so if you wish to address city council, we'll give you another minute to sign in, in the back with Lexi. And, uh, in the meantime, we're to refer items.
Vice President Hussein.
Move that. All items be considered written full and with the appropriate referrals be made by you.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes.
Okay, we have from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place and file.
And the general fund staff's report.
Committee of the whole, internal auditor.
Uh, from the mayor, we have redevelopment area liquor license for Pandoff Hill, DBA Lansing Duck Pen at 3224 East Michigan Avenue.
City operations.
We have, uh, grant acceptance for Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards for Community Policing Grant.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
Uh, grant acceptance, Office of Highway Safety Planning Grant for message signs.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
The appointment of Glenn Lopez to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
City operations.
The appointment of Chelsea Dowler to the Capital Area Transportation Authority Board.
Committee of the whole.
Uh, grant acceptance, Priority Health and National Fitness Campaign Grant for an outdoor gym at Davis Park.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And a grant acceptance, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant for hiring additional firefighters.
Ways and Means and internal auditor.
And objecting to the transfer of all, all unsold tax reverted properties from the Ingham County Treasurer to the City of Lansing.
Development and planning.
And from, uh, Council President Garza, we have two items relative to amending chapter 206, preference for local bidders.
City operations.
Communications and petitions. We have, uh, five claim appeals, uh, for 524 Avon Street, 5910 South Pennsylvania, and three of them are for 4417 Ballard Road.
City operations.
And, uh, we have communications from, from bridge items about Cata Spectran Service.
That be placed and filed.
Uh, we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any additional remarks from council? Councilman Cost.
Thank you, President Garza. Um, I just wanted to quickly, um, address something. Um, it was stated I wasn't at, uh, Tri-County on Aging today, and that is in fact true. And I do apologize for missing that meeting. Um, my cat is in end stages leukemia. Um, and I thought that the vet visit with him was, uh, more important at this point for me. Um, so I do apologize for not making that meeting.
Any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none.
Okay, we are to, uh, remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
I just want to thank our legal staff. Um, the sign ordinance, they, they spent a lot of time on that. Uh, I know, Councilman Garza, you and I spoke about this sign issue some time ago. And I, I told our, our, uh, our legal staff to be creative. And, um, and Greg and, and really his whole staff were very creative, uh, after you had brought this to me. And I, as soon as you told me, I started seeing the signs everywhere. Um, so I would like to thank our, our legal staff for, for listening and, and coming up with some creative solutions. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment. We have Daniel K. Arnold, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, this is Daniel Arnold, Facebook guy smiling, Lansing's number one fan of local, state, federal security police. I want to look back on the last meeting and just congratulate, uh, Farhan on being appointed to the Board of Police Commissioners. Uh, and, uh, um, there's just, uh, numerous people in this community, great investors and the betterment of our city. I noticed a lot of different rallies at the Capitol, uh, with, uh, the rent is too damn high, Second Look, and, uh, the Fair Chancing House hearing. Uh, just a lot of people working really hard to be a voice for currently and formerly incarcerated. They're brave, relentless, dignified and friendly, consider being an advocate. Uh, 5:30 PM, I plan on Wednesday to make it to the Capital Area District Libraries Board Meeting. I really appreciate all the city council members that really are lobbying for, uh, the continuation of the downtown district library. It's just so important to me, as I said before. Uh, yeah, I, I, I just see that as a key spot for everybody to get together in this community and feel welcome and, and, uh, help, helping all kinds of diverse people from families to children to, uh, homeless, to students, teenagers. Yeah, um, once again, uh, I'm advocating in my walking around, uh, for local, state, federal security police. I'm trying to be present as, at as many Board of Police Commissioner meetings as possible. And I do give tours. I do take people around to meet with local, state, federal security police. And I just encourage anybody that has any kind of complaint against the police to come on out to a police commissioner meeting, uh, which, uh, is tomorrow at 5:30 at police headquarters. Thank you all so much. I love this city. I love being a part of it and seeing all. Thank you all so much. I love this city. I love being a part of it and seeing all of you. Have an awesome day. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Daniel Black.
Okay, briefly, we'll just call this tidbits. Please, all of you council members, you don't have directional mics. Please speak into your mics, not over your shoulder, not around the corner, not at each other. We're having a harder time every week hearing some of you speak. Second, the parking in front of the City Hall continues to decline. I don't know what the, the procedures are, the reasons are, but it used to be there were about eight spaces in front of City Hall for people to park that weren't handicapped, or marked off for police, or whatever. We're down to five, and I don't have any clue why those other spaces have disappeared, but they have. It kind of discourages people from coming down when they can't find a parking spot, where they used to be able to find a parking spot. On the Board of Water and Light, from the conversations last time around, Mr. Pefley and Sandy Zerkel, you know, were on about how they had spent so much time and energy and effort dealing with the time of use rates and other stuff to do with the budget, but they didn't know that there were seven holidays that the public might think they could get a reduced time of use rate for, which they won't. So, I'm questioning, you know, how much did they look into that if they didn't know that basic thing? And Mr. Pefley mentioned something to do with the hydrants, or it was raised by somebody, I forget which. And he referred to the hydrant cost as a tax, which if any of you remember, the rain tax, you will remember that it could not legally be a tax. It can't even really be a fee. It's a surcharge. So, when he's misspeaking and calling a surcharge a tax, which would be an illegal thing to have, again, it brings to question how much preparation and understanding is there of these things? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Black.
I was remiss earlier when I failed to mention, thank you, or a kudo, to the staff member of city council, or the city councilman that was instrumental in providing the reasonable accommodation back here for the chair users. Thank you for this cutout for the chair users of Lansing. Thank you. If you want to pull me aside later on and say, I was the one responsible, please do. And just to echo Loretta's comments, please, please, for those folks that are hard of hearing or that are deaf, eat the microphone, guys. These microphones that you have may not be intended for the use that you're using them as from six to 18 inches away. Eat the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Okay, no further business on the agenda. We are adjourned.